Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California is now back to regular session. Only those items that are at an assigned time are going to be held at that time, otherwise we'll take things that are on the agenda according to staff and public availability and at the convenience of the Board. We are going to start this year with a moment of reflection, perhaps not only what you want to give thanks for, but for any special thoughts you would send our way. And now I'd ask you to join us, please, in the Fledge of Allegiance led by Elisa Northrup, the registrar of voters. And the first item of business is going to be since it's a new year is the hold the nomination election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Can I get a nomination for Chair, please?
I'd like to nominate Jerry Hemmingson as the Chairman of the Board for the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors for the year 2015.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and I'm flattered and honored to get the nomination, but to get a nomination, but I'm going to have to decline. I'm still in a recovery mode, as most of you know, I've had both of my knees replaced and I'm still recovering, it's going to be several months, so I don't think I can put in the time that's needed to be Chairman, so I am going to decline that nomination and I'm going to nominate Supervisor Finnegan to remain as Chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing done, we're going to close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one. Thank you very much, I appreciate your confidence, look forward to a great year of a very positive agenda. Now I'd like to entertain nominations for Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
I'm nominating the Vice Chair. I think that's a good thing to say.
Yes, I am currently the Vice Chair and have been able to perform those duties and would be happy to continue.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing done, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously. Thank you very much for agreeing to serve again, Jerry. Report of any actions from closed session by County Council?
No reportable action today.
And introduction of new employees? Do we have any? No? Okay, this time then I would ask for any deletions, corrections, or additions to the agenda. In order to take action on any new item, it had to have risen subsequent to posting the agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Are there any such items? No? Okay. Then the agenda will stand and right now I'd like to receive brief reports, announcements relative of County Del Norte business or travel. Start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you very much. Well, it's been a little while since we've met, an opportunity to take a cruise to the Caribbean over the holidays and returned right before the New Year. Monday, January 5th, I attended the swearing in of the newly elected at the county courthouse. Best wishes to all as they take their oaths and assume their positions of responsibility. It seems retirement is in the air quite a bit, as we turn the page on 2015. I attended the retirement of CHP Lieutenant Michael Riddell Saturday, that's January 3rd, and the following week was delighted to recognize the exemplary service of three-term Sheriff Dean Wilson. Lieutenant Riddell's replacement will be announced shortly and I offer my best wishes to our newly elected Chair of Eric Apperson. Tuesday, participated in the pre-agenda meeting set for Wednesday for the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority. Wednesday, the 7th, a special meeting of the Board was convened and we welcomed students from Takata High School in Japan. It's indeed a pleasure to see the relationship between our two communities develop as a result of the disaster of the March 2011 tsunami and how a small boat drifting over the vast Pacific for two years ended up on the shores of Del Norte County and the friendships that have ensued since then. Attended our monthly meeting of the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District in Eureka. Nothing to report at that this time. That very same evening Rebelwood Parks Association welcomed Barefoot Winery of Modesto to the Oceanfront Lodge, it's a great event, attended by my count about 150. Saturday, I attended an all-day retreat for the Crescent City Del Norte County Chamber of Commerce where chamber goals were discussed. Last Chance Grade and its replacement road remains a top priority. I further underscored the importance of economic development and that is bringing in private dollars into our community as we clear the way to prosperity. Well, it's been over a year since Sutter Coast Hospital contracted for the $175,000 Camden Study which reported the needs of our local hospital. Yesterday, I met with local urologist Mark Davis who told me the Sutter will be hiring another urologist. All of the needs of the specific community needs such as oncology, nephrology, surgery, and psychiatric psychiatry as outlined in the Camden Report were overlooked in view of the fact that we're going to be hiring another urologist and it kind of boggles my mind why our local hospital would hire and supplement for out of non-for-profit funds another urologist in our community. Several doctors have reported to me that they suspect these kind of revenge tactics employed by courageous staff who've opposed the development of critical access and regionalization, so I thank those doctors for standing tall in the face of some of these tactics. I met with constituents to discuss new challenges of blight in and about our Crescent City Del Norte community. I attended the 101 Highway Cleanup Plan, participated in that sponsored by the Crescent City Lions Club. We cleaned up about a mile, two miles of road and along Highway 101 north of McNamara Road. I also want to take this best wishes to Teacher Ron Quick who had a heart attack over the weekend, oh, excuse me, December 24th, and he's recovering, he's actually going back to work, which is quite amazing. Wish him the best. Finally, I returned to Del Norte County and contacted several private properties, when I returned to Del Norte County, I was contacted by several private property owners complaining about the problems caused by our local elk population. Interesting that District 1 does not exactly have an elk problem, uncontrolled elk destroying fences or eating precious grass designated for dairy cows wreaking havoc, high liability insurance problems on those private property owners. The Department of Fish and Wildlife is the responsible agency which is tasked with elk management, so though constituents in District 1 are not directly affected, I would ask our Board to invite key personnel in elk management to come to our January 27th meeting to meet with private property owners in Del Norte County. Brand Chief of Elk Management Eric Loft has indicated to me his desire to bring his team to Del Norte County if he is so invited. I would respectfully request our Board invite Mr. Loft to address the Board and affected property owners and I wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's been a while since, well, I shouldn't say that, we did have a special meeting, but I celebrated Christmas with family and friends, brought in the New Year very quietly. I participated in the swearing in, I was sworn in for my third term, so I'm just now starting my third term and look forward to that. Had a Local Transportation Commission Finance Committee meeting and partied, as I just mentioned previously, I was, attended the special Board meeting where the Japanese students along with their principal and teachers came to the Board meeting. It was a pretty neat, pretty neat deal. Had a, did have a Local Transportation Commission meeting where we had regular business as well as going along with the special financial or recommendations of the Financial Committee. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting where we accepted our coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission with the special conditions. Hopefully, we can get through those okay so we can start Phase 2 and 3 for the airport project. Also had several contracts for the mitigation projects that are tied to that coastal development permit. As, well, and I also attended the retirement party for Dean Wilson. It was very entertaining. If you have not heard our Sheriff do his rendition of Elvis Presley, you haven't seen it all, so he did a, he did a great job and it was quite entertaining. As Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, had several calls on elk issues and I agree that we should, staff should be directed to try to put together a meeting at the earliest possibility. The next meeting would be great if we can make it happen that quickly. Also had some constituent issues, bear issues, so that also would be under Fish and Wildlife, so that would be good if we could put something together and get Fish and Wildlife up here with those parties that, those responsible parties that can answer the questions that we need to ask. And that was about it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you, and Happy New Year to everyone. So, between the Christmas and New Year's holidays, I was celebrating with my family and had very few meetings, but I did have a opportunity to meet with Senator Maguire and we toured the Rumiano's, yeah, the Rumiano Cheese Factory, that's what I wanted, the factory. And that was very interesting and then we also had lunch, but I think that, as I also attended the California Coastal Commission where we did approve the permit for the airport and I have, because of the rules of recusing oneself, I, with David and Jerry having to recuse themselves from the transfer of the land from Del Norte County to the airport, we signed all of those deeds yesterday, so all of that is moving forward. And I think that one of the surprising things that we're going to see is that when we do these restoration projects at Pacific shores, it's going to be an economic engine because it's going to, there are going to be people who are going to be able to be making a living wage taking care of conservation. So sometimes conservation comes with a, with a great deal of job opportunity, so I just wanted to identify that. But I, primarily today, I would like to review that we have, our three elected officials that represent our area have made some great inroads into their organizations and Congressman Huffman, who will be here on the 16th to do a town hall meeting at the Veterans Hall from 6:30 to 8, he will be here, but one of the really great things that he has achieved is he has been appointed to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee and that committee is the authorizing committee of the funds for different programs. And one of the programs under the Transportation and Infrastructure, of course, is the Highway Trust Fund, which is of great interest to us in relationship to getting money to get some of the necessary repairs. It also covers the emergency, the Essential Air Service funding, and so he will now be on that committee that authorizes it. It also covers water, Water Resources, the Water Resources and Development Act, which controls dredging. So that is very exciting to know that he's on that committee because that is a committee that reaches us in a lot of ways and in very expensive ways, so we need to keep in mind who our, who our friends are. And as Mike Maguire, our Senate, our state Senator, he has been assigned to be the Human Resources Chair and he is the Chair of the Fisheries and Aquaculture Joint Committee. He is on the Rules Joint Committee. He is on Transportation and Housing. He's on Public Safety, Government Organization, and the Energy Utilities and Communications Committee. And probably the most important for us is to know that he's, by being the Chair of Humans, of Health and Human Services and the Transportation and Housing and the Communication, that we can work on some of the projects that we want to complete, i.e. broadband, so that's a good thing. And our Assemblyman Wood, he is also on the Fisheries and Aquaculture and he is also on the Rules Joint Committee and he's on the Assembly Appropriations Committee, Health and Natural Resources. So we really have some exciting opportunity here, especially at the state level with new, having a new Assemblyman and a new Senator, and for them to get chairmanships is very exciting and for them to both be on Rules is a very prestigious position. So we have, we have two new players or two new people in Sacramento that are in extremely strategic positions for us and we need to make sure that we nurture that relationship and that we work with them to get the support that I think that they're going to try to be able to deliver. So with that, that'll end my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Finnegan. The, there hasn't been a tremendous amount going on, but I will report back on a few items, especially the request by the Board to send me to the new Supervisor's Training in Anaheim this year. That two-day training was very useful, more importantly, for a brand-new Board member like myself. They scared the socks off of me, most of the County Councils, but that was to be expected. Learned quite a bit and then learned even more when I got stuck on a plane trying to get back here and never really made it back that night, but was fortunate enough to catch a very late ride home from Arcata in the evening. I have been paying particular attention to several issues in my district, stuff that arose in 2014 through groundwater legislation, which is brand-new to the state of California. Have been working very closely with Community Development Director Constable on this particular issue and more importantly, paying close attention to it because it appears the state, like always, has given us a designation that might not be just. And so paying particular attention, talking to DWR about those specific issues and trying to work with Community Development on how to move forward with a more appropriate designation for our county. Also paying particular attention right now with movement with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, specific to the irrigated lands management, which has been in our area for quite some period of time, for the last two years. In particular, our lily ball growers have been under tremendous amount of scrutiny in offering up best practices and more importantly, how they're going to manage pesticides within their backyard, which they do a very good job at right now, I might add. However, the state has felt it important to bring this under a certain level of scrutiny and I myself have participated in several meetings with Supervisor Hemmingson in really looking at this issue closely and making sure our lily ball producers have their fair share and more importantly, their fair shake with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. Again, participated in several of the discussions with the students from Takata High School. That was quite the pleasure. Many of you might not know this, but my family has quite a history in Japan, besides internment for some relatives. More importantly, my uncle spent almost 25 years there in foreign service and was the last, was the last person to stay in the mansion, the U.S. Embassy Mansion in downtown Tokyo, which I got a chance to experience during his last tour there. But it was incredible connection because his wife also taught in Japan and it was, it was quite the moment to see the kids walk in in their uniforms because that was my, my very first experience going to Japan is watching all these kids crowd around you in their uniforms practicing their English and it was good to see it continue. I've been very diligent in attending our Smith River Neighborhood Watch meetings. It's good to see Jake Smith here today. The, they're doing quite a bit out there and I'm hoping with Sheriff Apperson and the commitments he's made to Smith River Neighborhood Watch will continue to address some of the issues going out there in that neighborhood. Also have spent some time with our state National Parks folks, getting familiar with some of their issues in their backyard, both Steve Prokop and Jeff Pompke. And one thing I did want to highlight from the training in Anaheim that I know Supervisor Gitlin and Supervisor Finnegan were able to attend the discussions with Blue Zones with Dan Buettner. And that discussion, if most folks aren't familiar with it, was one of the most widely sold National Geographic issues ever. Actually, it was the second most highly sold National Geographic issues ever and it was called Blue Zones and more specifically addressed longevity in cultures and how people live over 100 and what was the connection between cultures and why people lived over 100. And I thought it was important, the lessons that we learned from these discussions by Dan at our CSAC meeting, but more importantly, how these lessons have been brought back to the United States and how they've been actually implemented in communities in the United States, more importantly, 38 communities with very diverse demographics. And I've actually had several discussions with Tony Buettner, Dan's brother, since returning from that meeting and very interested in to see if there's anything that Blue Zones Project could do for Del Norte County, working with our Building Healthy Communities Initiative. And at that time, Chairman Finnegan, that's all I have to report.
Well, thank you. I also had a few meetings, now trying to be brief on some of them, Regional Council of Rural Counties, we had, where we elected a new Board, new officers. Had a tri-agency meeting where we talked about economic development. Had a couple of calls with the National Forest County Schools Coalition where we get our road money and schools money. Still looking for legislation, enabling legislation to allow that to happen. Right now, there is no more forest payments that are coming in. Had a couple of calls with the Finance Corps, discussions with individuals regarding, some of the players regarding Sutter Coast and the displeasure of how things are going. First five, had a nice meeting there, strategic plan. Steve Barrow, longtime friend and a person that's led those discussions, attended and helped us along. Also, I had talks with Barbara Bush regarding economic development. Met at the airport with Senator Maguire and talked about his commitment to the airport as well as his commitment to Last Chance Grade and some of the infrastructure issues that we have in common that we're going to work together on. Obviously spent Christmas and New Years with family, had a great time. Had our special meeting with the Japanese students from Takata High, it was very, very nice to see. Great for them to be able to experience something like that, much the same way that our high school kids were able to experience that with them over in Japan. Did agenda review, had a Local Transportation Commission meeting, had an airport JPA that Jerry reported out on, lots of good stuff going on there. Cleared most of the major hurdles so we can look forward to some of the new projects after the RSA, such as a new terminal. Had meetings with the first five at the Family Resource Center regarding visioning and staffing. Went to Dean Wilson's retirement, Sheriff Wilson's retirement, well-attended, lots of fun. Had a, there was a JPA call that I was unable to be on yesterday with Border Coast Regional Airport Authority and some new people interested regarding airport service. There was a memo that came out from Matt Leitner regarding that call. It was a conference call with Penn Air. Penn Air is a reputable operator, is co-share partner with Alaska Airlines. They operate a fleet of SOB 340s. I'm going to try not to steal his thunder because he's going to have a meeting with the Triplica tomorrow. The bottom line is, is that company is going to very publicly ask for an extension to bid on the RSA, excuse me, the EAS, too many acronyms, so the Essential Air Service. They have every intention of coming to the community. What they fly is, the SOB 40 is actually a 34-seater, it is a little bit bigger than the Brasilia and has bathrooms and steward, flight attendants, I date myself when I say that. So, good news there, things are looking up. Also, SkyWest has agreed, they weren't taking any more reservations because they want to get out of here. Well, now they're, they're going to extend the reservation period and trying to do a nice handoff with the new carrier. So it looks very, very positive and I'm going to let Matt and the newspaper break that to everybody, perhaps today and tomorrow. I also, well, I was confirmed on the appointment by the Caltrans, by the Transportation Commission regarding the Use Tax Pilot Program Committee and also received calls, not just regarding abatement issues for blight on the Dundas area, which is being handled very well, but also on the elk, daily calls, and it's happened probably since the last time we invited Fish and Wildlife to be here. So I had, in fact, I'm sure that Mrs. Ferguson is going to address the Board under public comment period where she thought that perhaps on the 27th we could get, schedule something to talk about this. I'm leaning more towards the direction that Supervisor Hemmingson spoke of, in other words, to give direction to staff, to work with all the concerned parties, to make sure that we have a date certain for this, but it does need to be on the agenda. So I'm going to take it that three of the Supervisors brought it up, unless I hear difference, concurrence, that we direct staff to work with Fish and Wildlife, the Board of Supervisors, Mrs. Ferguson, and any other interested parties to get this on our agenda, to get it before us. It's a problem that we need to take the lead on regarding the management issue of the elk in this county. Other than that, I think that about wraps it up. And Jay, how about a report from the CAO?
Many of the same things, obviously, the holidays and was able to take a couple of days off, that was nice. Was also able to come in and see the city and county public works and county engineering and roads working together on a sewer issue. Not always the kind of meeting you want to go to, but they do work very well together. That'll, number of meetings with different department heads, a couple of our newer department heads, go over some of the issues that are out there and help with any questions they might have. Had a meeting with, a couple of different meetings for one of the items that's on the agenda day, which is the jail and the borrow and juvenile hall medical contract issue that popped up right before the holidays. Did some evaluations, attended the special meeting and Saturday was the kickoff for our Recreation Youth Basketball and I mention this every year because it's one of our larger programs and one of our most entertaining programs. And if you haven't seen any of the games, they're played at the Recreation Gym and Crescent Elk on Saturdays, all day. And all day is getting longer because this year we've had at least 450 participants, which is up about 50 kids. And John Horner is the coordinator for that with a number of other people, including players from Del Norte High School, both girls and boys teams. They coach some of the teams and they're volunteer coaches. We have paid referees. It's a, it's quite an undertaking each year, but we're going to have to start looking at how we expand it. We had a lot of late registrants, well over 100 late registrants and which means it's difficult for John to coordinate buying the T-shirts and getting sponsors and finding the time. We may have to even expand gyms again. So it's a, it's a good problem to have. Also participated in a conference call regarding the Governor's Proposed Budget and I will report a little bit more on the Governor's Proposed Budget under the Budget section.
Very good, and I will try not to steal your thunder, but I did turn my paper over and it did deal with the Governor's Budget. And while I'm going to let you report on most of it, it is a $113.3 billion, that's B as in billion-dollar budget. There are some significant things that I want to give a quick highlight to because it has directly to do with some of the lobbying efforts that myself and CSAC and RCRC has done with Michael Cohen as the Director of Finance, with the Governor himself and his staff. In the past, there are some new things there that weren't there last year and it's directly related to those efforts and we don't take credit enough for it, but here it is. Aside from the normal stuff, there is pilt. Aside from the normal stuff, there is PILT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. While it is not enough, it is the first time that the Governor has included it. Usually, the legislature does and the Governor vetoes it. That is $644,000, but it excludes the school's share of the taxes. So that's directly to counties, not nearly enough, and it doesn't address the back payments that were owed, but it is a step in the right direction. Along that line of back payments, there's about $390 million of his accelerated payments out of the $533 million that is going to go back to counties to pay for some of the realignment that you're going to speak to, the pre-mandates, the pre-11 mandates. And the other thing that's very significant is something we've been, some of us have been beating on the Governor's door and Finance door for, is fund fair operations. And the Governor has put back in his budget, this is his proposal, which of course is subject to the legislature to either increase or decrease, is all these things, but this is the great indicator, $10 million to fund fair operations, $3.1 million to assist with fair operations, and a one-time allocation of $7 million to fund with deferred maintenance of the California fairs. I think a lot of that discussion was, really gained momentum in large part because not just what we were doing in the Western Fairs Association in Amador County, but especially Delmar County, especially your voice that you had through me, in that we took a vote and passed our own tax that said we were willing to help ourself. And I think this weighed very heavy on a positive outlook on the Governor's budget. So, good stuff there, and I hope I didn't steal too much from you, Jay, you get to report out on the rest of it. With that, it is public comment period time. Any member of the public may address the board on any item that's within the purview of the board. If it's scheduled a later time, you might want to wait, but if not, have at it. Public comment. Mr. Miles, welcome back. Happy 2015.
Yeah. My name's Richard Miles, I'm a city resident, but also a county resident, and I want to talk about Winky Dinky today. There's been a lot of letters recently in our newspaper about the quality of life here in Delmar County. I'm going to call something to the county's attention today. The largest section of the coastal, Tenafonia Coastal Trail is in the county. It starts on Pebble Beach and runs all the way out to Point St. George. Recently, the county did a lot of improvements on Pebble Beach, which is part of the coastal trail. Well, if you go out there and you look at some of the pullouts, there's this little dinky sign on the pullout. It's about this big, it ain't very big. Winky Dinky. I'm going to show you something. This is the logo for the coastal trail. We have people visiting this area, and since the improvements that the harbor's going to do, what the city has done, and a lot of work done by the county, we have a tourist attraction. The beauty of riding a bike or even walking some of that section, you wouldn't see anywhere else in the world. I'm making a request today that the county ask the transportation, Tamara and Brekianin, for some funding to produce some of these signs, and have the road department put them along the path of Pebble Beach. Then people would know that it's there. This is the problem we have here, a lot of times, we don't brand Delmar County. There used to be a saying at this meeting, and it was kind of come from the chamber, it was, there's more than one thing to do in Delmar County in a day. We don't broadcast that. Someday, I'd like to see the National Park join...
Wrap it up.
Okay, I got to shut up.
Thank you, thank you, Richard, appreciate that very much.
Good morning. Congratulations to Chris in his new position as your representative on the Golden Gate Bridge. I thought I'd bring you up to date. We just spent $30 million to place a medium barrier on the bridge, and immediately after it opened, there was one accident that was not our fault.
Yeah.
Apparently, the fog was so bad, Dennis gave me, or General Manager gave me a report yesterday afternoon, that someone had stalled in the fog, everyone driving too fast and too close, and of course, it was a six-car pileup. But anyway, that, the thing is working just fine. The zipper trucks moved that medium barrier back and forth, and it's going well. In addition to that, we're going to go out with our RFP for the suicide barrier that will be somewheres between $75 and $85 million. And of course, what people don't understand is that our whole scaffolding system underneath has to be changed in order to accommodate the suicide net that's there. At that ceremony they had, I did not go down, but Nancy Pelosi was there and Jackie Spears, and then, I'm not sure if McGuire made it or not, but anyway, it was a great little event. They had a photo op in the center of the bridge because there was no traffic on it, they stopped out there and let everyone off the bus, and things seemed to be going well. So, you know what's happening on the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. I did see a picture of Supervisor Rabbit from Sonoma County out there standing on top of the barrier in the middle of the bridge, and I thought, I was a little jealous.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
First of all, thank you guys for getting it on the agenda, and either one of those two dates, I think, could work, after you get some direction about getting people together. But I had a chance to talk to a couple of these folks, I will be calling you to kind of give you some personal information, what's going on. But I also felt the frustration, I guess, on some of your parts, saying, well, what can we do? And the only thing I can say to you is kind of like going to a basketball game up against fish and game. You know that they've kicked your butts in the past, and, but you still have to show up for the game and try new techniques and go forward in another contest with them. It's ironic how we were on our way to come in here today, and Brian was with me and we got a call, and the elk on Lower Lake Road had either knocked our fence down between Shepherd's or Brock's fence, and there was about 80 elk in there, Tony Shepherd called, and the cows are mixed up. And this is a daily occurrence in our life, it's taken two to three hours a day just to ride shotgun on them. The other part, fish and game is now fish and wildlife, and I think that they need to realize that the elk are no longer wildlife, they've become almost a household pet. Down in the birch track, you have a lot of mom and pop gardens. My uncle's 94 years old, he can't get out his back door to go water his two pet sheep, have three bull elk, even though he has 10-foot fencing up, they find a way to get in because he has his garden and his fruit trees. So this is not just an ag issue, it's a public health and safety issue. Bull elk are dangerous, people have trouble getting from their house to their car. Like those elk out in the field there today, we could probably walk from here to that wall behind you from them, they just aren't afraid of people anymore. And so, for once, I don't think this is just the ag issue and people saying, well, make room for the wildlife, but they're in, like I said, destroying fruit trees, vegetable gardens, punching up mound septics, imposing a threat, not to mention how many of them are on the roads, coming off the national and state park where they have their bed down time, and then it's almost taking your life in your hands, coming off of Crescent Hill, going up to Smith River. And I did ask the Highway Patrol if they would compile some information for us, how many elk vehicle incidents there's been, say like in the last 24 months. And I think we need to kind of start looking at the whole interest, not just the ag interest that's being affected.
Thank you very much. Helen, I've just, Jay's going to be in touch with you, I know you've had some contact with some of those individuals, compare notes and set something up, and I appreciate you bringing it forward to us, it is economic, health and safety, ag, you name it. Thank you.
I have two comments on that, that I think that we need to ask possibly the Chair to send a letter to the Fish and Wildlife Commissioner that lives in McKinleville, and ask her to please come up and possibly have a meeting with, you know, a couple of board members and possibly some affected people, and actually give her a little bit of a tour, if she would be willing to come, because that, to me, is an asset that we have in our backyard, that we have a commission member so close, that we should invite them. And then, on the outdoor garden thing, this is just a, I have a friend who has a really powerful sprinkler, and it's activated by motion, and when those elk walk into that garden, they get hit pretty hard with a little spritz of water, and some of them are getting used to it, but a lot of them will continue on their path instead of eat all of the zucchini.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, then I'm going to bring everything back to the board, and I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to delete item 17 for discussion.
Okay, well, let's pull it instead of deleting it, and for separate discussion.
Pull it, excuse me.
And anything else, or can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any public comment on any item that is on the consent agenda except for number 17, which we'll talk about separately?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Happy New Year. Item number four has direct relation to my department. This is the new medical contract, which is to last until the end of June. I want to thank the administration for taking care of that and making sure that we have proper medical care for our wards, as well as the inmates in jail. I do have several concerns, I got a very brief moment to speak with Jay this morning, and I'll be addressing those as he puts together the RFP and we look at creating a new contract with another vendor. But in particular today, of concern to me is the dispensing of medication. This is covered in Attachment A. Number two under Juvenile Hall lists the method for dispensing medication, and it's stated as an as-needed basis. The common practice for Mr. Phillips, as he's been our medical provider for so long, has been three times a day, he shows up at Juvenile Hall to dispense medications. It is listed for the jail in number three, under that section in Attachment A, that the medical provider will show up three times a day at the jail to dispense medications. I'm not exactly sure of the proper procedure, but I would like that addressed, because my concern is, it could either go one of two ways. I could hold Mr. Crowe under the new contract to dispense the medication as is prescribed, which can be, you know, once every four hours. That, I understand, would be a burden to him, and it's not something that I would want to do. However, I also don't want him to have a way to get out of actually dispensing medications to my wards as they're needed. And so whatever the proper procedure is to address that and hopefully fix that over the next five months, I'd ask for some help with that.
I was able to talk to Lonnie briefly. What I had suggested to him was that with the board's direction, that we modify that one section to sit down with the contractor. This contract and the language in the contract isn't changed from previously, this was an accelerated situation based on the resignation, if you want to call it that, of the nursing provider. So, what we can do is to tidy that up, look at that language in particular, or any other language that Lonnie has in there. For a minor change like that, I would suspect that we wouldn't have to bring it back if the board directed that, and we can then have the coverage for jail, Juvenile Hall, and Boro, and be able to tidy those up to the satisfaction of both the contracting party and the county and Lonnie.
Do you feel that you need to, obviously you're going to work on it towards the next, in July or June, next contract, do you feel that you need some different verbiage to allow you some flexibility to, on this amended contract, to talk about times, dispensation, or is it just something you can work out?
Well, on this one, I think we do need to, we don't necessarily need the time, we need the direction. It's a fairly straightforward, past-practice wording change, and I think we can cover that pretty easily. The biggest deal on this is so that we can do the transition from Jim Phillips over to Turtle Medicine, which is actually our doctor provider right now. I think we can fix that part. We're already working on the RFP, and we have some wording changes, including that 30-day out will be extended to at least 90 days, so we don't run into this again. But I think we can fix it.
So it's okay with the board, if there's concurrence, to give that direction to staff, that'll be the understanding under passage of this in the consent agenda. Concurrence? Okay, so directed. Thank you very much. Any other public comment on the consent agenda items? Back to the board for the discussion. Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. And under the consent agenda, item number six was to approve and authorize the Chair to sign a resolution that Delmar County Board of Supervisors observing Seroptimus International and regarding, Seroptimus International Crescent City regarding Stop Trafficking Awareness Campaign in the month of January. And I'm asking Supervisor McClure to please read that resolution.
Thank you. Yes, this is a resolution of the Delmar County Board of Supervisors observing Seroptimus International of Crescent City's Stop Trafficking Awareness Campaign in the month of January 2015. Whereas the Seroptimus International of Crescent City is committed to improve the lives of women and girls in local communities and throughout the world, and whereas Seroptimus launched its Trafficking Awareness Campaign project called Seroptimus Stop Trafficking in January 2009, the National Day of Human Trafficking Awareness, and whereas Seroptimus International of Crescent City has joined Seroptimus around the world to raise awareness about the devastating problem of human trafficking, sexual exploitation, and slavery, and whereas human trafficking is a worldwide epidemic with an estimated 20 to 30 million people in some form of slavery today, and it is the third-largest criminal enterprise, and whereas human trafficking is the movement of people for the purpose of commercial sexual exploitation and promised legitimate work, and whereas it is estimated that 14,000 to 18,000 people are trafficked in the United States each year, and whereas we must all work together to end human trafficking and sexual exploitation around the world and in our local communities through education, and whereas all persons should actively oppose and report individuals, groups, or organizations who support, advance, or commit acts of human trafficking and sexual exploitation, and whereas the effort of Seroptimus, individuals, businesses, organizations, and governing bodies, it is to promote a human trafficking awareness campaign in the month of January to raise both awareness and opposition to human trafficking. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors oppose human trafficking and sexual exploitation and promotes human trafficking awareness throughout the month of January, passed and adopted on this, the 13th day of January 2014.
Thank you very much for this. We have some little handouts for you, and I think we need to add something to say.
Yes. As a lot of you know, I spent about 14 years as the local rape crisis advocate. As a lot of you know, I spent about 14 years as the local rape crisis advocate and I can tell you that human trafficking isn't something that just happens in big cities and other countries. On a personal note, I have a friend who was trafficked in her own home by her own husband to his friends at work for about three years. And those men beat her, raped her and drugged her for three years. She's out of that situation now, but it's just a small example of the huge control that people have over vulnerable people. And the people who are being trafficked are children and women and men. So I don't want it to sound like that just traffic only happens to women because men are trafficked, children are trafficked. And the thing that we can do here in our small community is report something if you suspect there's something going on. And even if it's wrong, the worst-case scenario is that it's wrong. Best-case scenario, you might have saved someone's life. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
And we want to thank you again and just also, it does happen in rural communities. North Dakota is a good example. The oil fields of North Dakota is one of the highest-trafficked area right now for young girls under the age of 18.
Disgusting.
Thank you, supervisors, for recognizing Seroptimus International of Crescent City's effort to make people aware of this issue in our community. And it makes us very sad that we have to even talk about something like this, but we thank you for recognizing our efforts.
Thank you very, very much for bringing it to our attention once again and for championing this cause of awareness on human trafficking and his opposition to it. Thank you.
I just want to add that I saw an ad, and I don't know if it was by Seroptimus or who, but it was about trafficking on one of the television channels. And the number one thing that they were promoting is if you live in a neighborhood and you know there's a lady that lives there or you know there's a child that lives there, but you hardly ever see them, call CPS or Adult Protective Services because possibly that may be a sign that something is not quite right. So if you, you know, watch your neighborhood and if you get that kind of uneasy feeling because you just don't see that little child playing, call someone because that might be, that might be the person who assists that person in getting out of a situation.
Thank you. This time we're gonna take up item number 17. Jay, why don't you do a lead-in and then we'll find out what Supervisor Gitlin's questions are.
The documents that are here were brought forward by the fair in regards to the implementation of the tax. The request that's in these documents is that the county sign with, in agreement with the Board of Equalization, to basically implement the taxation process. I don't believe that Mr. Hatfield's here today. I think he's out of town. They were aware that this was gonna be on the agenda. I had this reviewed by our auditor controller as well as county council before we brought it up. I had a couple of questions on it because of the way that the ordinance reads. It almost looks like we are making decisions for the district. In fact, we're signing the document, but they've already made those decisions through the tax process. Beyond that, I think they would need to ask, answer any questions. I believe Martha Rice is the point person for the fair. But they, they were the proponents and I believe they've covered all of that.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Well, I brought this up because it's a very small point, but I think it's an important one. I'll just read to you from the agenda, which we all have, and authorizes and approves the agreement for preparation to administer and operate districts and use tax ordinance and adopt resolution authorizing the county administrative officer to execute agreements with the State Board of Equalization for implementation of the local transactions and use tax as requested by the county administrative officer. That's all fine. Then when I actually read the document, missing from here, prior to Jay's name, is his title. So I'll read it. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar authorizing Jay Serena to execute agreements with the State Board. I think it's imperative, I think it's prudent to include county administrative officer. This is going to the state franchise tax board who doesn't have knowledge of who Jay is and I think it's important that we identify him. And at the end, hereby approved and prior to Mr. Serena's name, simply include the words county administrative officer is hereby authorized to execute each agreement. With those changes, I think this clarifies the agreement and it makes certain it's not just someone who is unfamiliar with our county, it's not an independent person, it's in fact the county administrative officer. And that was the reason I brought it up to our board today.
Can you, page six, is that what you're referring to?
The resolution.
Again, I can read it to you if you want.
I've got it here. Jay?
I think that's a prudent thing to do. The document was compiled by the fair, so I'll talk with them to make sure they're comfortable with it too. If not, we can bring it back, but certainly.
Just for the record, I did speak with Randy yesterday. He called me and I bring, and he thought that was a prudent idea and that secondary conversation with Mr. Shad, our auditor controller, said the clarification was important. I know it's only gonna be used once, it's going to Sacramento and I think it's important to highlight your role in your, as your role as the county administrative officer. So I'd appreciate adding that verbiage.
Okay, it's been suggested, in fact, Roger, probably the proper thing to do is why don't you make the motion and include the amendment?
I will move to add the words county administrative officer prior to, following the word authorizing, prior to the word Jay on the resolution 2015. And at the end, thereby be it resolved, hereby approved and add the word counties, the words county administrative officer, followed by the word Jay Serena is hereby authorized to execute each agreement.
Okay, so rather than just those amendments, are you also making a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Public comment? Back to the board, further comments? Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. And with that, we're going to go to item number 25, General Government to Approve the Mental Health Services Act Three-Year Program and Expenditure Plan. And Barbara, did you want to address the board and give us a little prelude to this?
The Mental Health Services Act-
Just for the record, would you identify yourselves, please?
I'm Barbara Pearson. I'm the Health and Human Services Director and this is Jack Brazil.
I'm Jack Brazil, Clinical Services Manager for Melhealth.
So the Mental Health Service Act was, is funded by the, what we call the millionaire's tax, but then is divided up by counties. And every three years, we have to put together a plan that is vetted by the stakeholders in this community, consumers, agencies and other people. And then every year, we have to do an annual update. So this plan was due prior to me arriving. I know it was late and we got an extension because Jack is new as well. So we have gone past our extension and we're asking for this to be approved and then we will start our annual update in April.
Is this a fairly fluid document or is this, are we, whatever this says, we're stuck to for three years?
No, we can revise it at the annual update, which we will do in April and really have more of a comprehensive planning process.
Good. Any questions from board members?
I just have a couple of comments, possibly some questions, and that is that having worked with children in the county for 30 years, it appears that we have a underserved population. And I noticed in here, in the budgeting of the, I think it was called the bridge, is that the name of the program? Did that increase or decrease? It didn't seem like a lot of money to me for children. It seemed that there was quite a bit of other money in the budget, but I was kind of surprised.
The, I think as Barbara indicated, the, a lot of the programs that we fund were really very static related to this three-year plan because of the time. We are six months overdue and actually getting close to seven. And so we really had to get this taken care of. It's further complicated a little bit by our children's services are contracted out to Remy Vista and we have historically relied on them to provide a great deal of service. And Barbara and I have had many discussions about the gaps that that has created for our county and we can absolutely expect to see more programmatically for a lot of our underserved children, older adults, populations that historically we have not done the best for, so.
So that's gonna be at the April review?
That's gonna be in the April report and, or, and there is, money is available for programs. We just, as Barbara indicated, this was kind of a, let's get this to the state so we don't lose funding for what we're already doing.
And that was my next question in relationship to reserves. Do, is this, is this, are any of these dollars allowed to roll over in that three-year period or do we start at ground zero every three years?
No, some of them are. We're required to maintain a prudent reserve, which we have. Almost $700,000 that were required by the state. Some of the prevention and early intervention rolls over, so we're looking at that. Some of the funds do or don't, but there is adequate money that is rolled over from year to year that we really can be looking at comprehensively.
And as part of the April review, you'll follow through with the stakeholder meetings and the public issues?
I think we'll be creating more committees and, or really going out to a lot of the groups that already exist instead of creating that and really going through a process. We've been talking internally about other programs. Many counties have merged their drug and alcohol and mental health and certainly big changes like that, more prevention at earlier ages, really needs to have a thorough planning process with all the agencies and consumers.
And that's what you're gonna do?
And I don't know how much, since we're new, families of these children have been involved either, so.
Great.
Any other board questions this time? I'm gonna, instead of entertaining a motion, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment regarding this item. Public comment?
Janine Galatira, working with First Five.
Patty Ver Nelson, Director of First Five Delmar.
We're looking forward to an opportunity of working with the Mental Health Department, with Health and Human Services on some mental health preventative services primarily for children zero to five because we know that half of the lifetime cases of mental disorders are identified, should be identified before the age of 14 so that people can receive adequate care. The plan as it exists right now does not address children under the age, school-aged children. And so we're hoping that we can work with the department and we can use some of the funds to look at programs that might benefit and identify early mental health disorders for children and strengthen families.
So I would just say that First Five is very much looking forward to working with Barbara and Jack and stakeholders. One of the things that came out in our kindergarten readiness surveys that we've been doing in partnership with the school district for the past three years, and this is the fourth year, is people don't understand that kindergarten readiness is not just about academics, it's absolutely about social emotional development. And one of the huge issues that we have seen in Delmar County is our children are not socially, emotionally ready for kindergarten. They don't have self-regulation skills and it cuts across income barriers, it cuts across the whole county. And so that's a preventive mental health, behavioral health issue. And so we're just really looking forward to having more attention put on that because it really is about are our kids ready for school, do parents know how to deal with difficult behaviors of little people and it's prevention. So we're excited about having this conversation.
Any other public comment?
Just before the holiday season, Steve Perez, HU Community Fellowship. Just prior to the holidays, I had a chance to have a little bit of a conversation with Barbara about some of the services being provided by, by her department. And we've been invited to, I've been invited to recruit about two or three pastors in town here to talk about the mental health issues as we see them, especially as it pertains to the issue of children as well. Because in our churches, we oftentimes are engaging with people who are suffering from really some significant mental health issues. Oftentimes, we see children with dual diagnosis as well in terms of children with developmental disabilities who also suffer from mental health issues as well. So as, as one of the church leaders, I've been able to recruit two, two others from town here to be able to come together and act as stakeholders from the spiritual side and to share with the department what's going on for us, what we see and how we provide support and hopefully we can bring some, some insight from that perspective as well. So we're very supportive of the direction here.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Just, since Barbara's been aboard and since I've started too, we have talked quite a bit about our children's system of care and families. One of the things that we have initiated and it was sort of important with this three-year plan to utilize funding is those training dollars that we've been sitting on. And we already have a plan in place for one of our staff to go to UC Davis and get training in infant mental health, which has a lot to do with attachment, social development, all of those things that, and so we are very conscious of this stuff and we doing our best and part of that is just making sure we have those fundings available based upon the approval of this three-year plan.
Good, very good. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Sure. I would move to approve the Mental Health Services Act Three-Year Program Expenditure Plan Agreement with the Department of Mental Health and authorize the budgets as requested by the director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further comments? The only comment that I have is, is what an opportunity. I know in the past, we've had department heads, when something gets pulled off the consent agenda, it strikes fear in their heart. And the reason I pulled it off is so we could begin this conversation, having Barbara as a new department head. What a great opportunity to move forward in a positive direction, acknowledging the opportunities that are before us, especially in funding, as well as partnerships. And I think you've heard from, from First Five here today, I'm not gonna pick through the budget, other than to say there is an astronomical amount of money available. And usually it's the other case, people are afraid, oh, you're gonna take my dollars. Well, there's, there is enough there to really create a fantastic continuum that includes children, early children, education, infants, families, young adults, elders as well. So with that, I'm encouraged and look forward to some of the positive directions that we're gonna be taking here with new partners as well as old partners. Hold the vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes, and thank you very much, Barbara. We have some budget transfers.
Move to approve budget transfer 12-02, 12-03, 12-04, 12-05, 12-06 and 01-01.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt the, and approve the budget transfers as mentioned. Public comment? Back to the board, hold the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. And with that, we're about, we've drawn to the, close the regular business. I look forward to a very positive year with very positive direction in 2015. I think we're gonna do something a little bit different. We never take credit for the good work that we do or to explain the direction that we're going to be taking. Sometimes we just hunker down and try to dodge the rocks or bullets, whatever you'd like to call it. So we're gonna be having a state-of-the-county address that CAO's gonna help create along with myself and any other input that anybody has and staying, enhancing our communication with our partners to get this community- with our partners to get this community, which has so many needs, to number one, acknowledge the good work that we're doing and to build on that, to identify those needs and fill them. So thank you very much and we will-
Just as a request, that I think about three or four meetings ago, you mentioned the possibility that we would revisit our, our goals and objectives that we had, and so I hope that that's part of that dialogue of the, of meeting, how, you know, how we all met as a community and kind of came up with those goals. I'm hoping that that was what you were talking about.
Yes, absolutely. And in fact, we're going to be adding some new twists such as we, the Board talked about a children's budget and I think we're going to allow First Five to develop that and bring that forward. So a perfect example of working with partners to bring something good back to the Board that we can take action on. So we'll see you next time. Thanks very much. Meeting adjourned.
Good idea.